Doing that first. Welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting of November 13, 2025. Joining us this evening and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance will be Darian Ramadiel. So I would ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for the 86 police officers killed in this country in the line of duty this year. So, Darian, it's all yours, buddy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Darian, stay there, don't go anywhere just yet. We have exciting prizes and gifts to give you. It's like a game show. So, Darian, as we always do when somebody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we give away your stuff, okay? So, we have this beautiful certificate that you can hang in your office at work. And we've got this fire apology shirt on. Okay, we're all with them. So, smiley Jessica for the photo op. And he goes, this is yours. And you can come point me up, son. While I've got everybody here, Vic Farley is on over with us. Okay, now, I'm not saying that something happened with him, but he did resign. So I would like to announce that my new deputy mayor is Susan Suriello. You have no idea what's going on. Your first act is deputy mayor is to steal the certificate from the child. Have a seat. If you want some healthy and unhealthy snacks, I brought them. All right. Second order of business, the third order of business is a swearing-in ceremony. So at this time, I would ask village clerk McLennan to do your duty and swear in our newest trustee.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kathleen Madola.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the trustee.
Of the village of Woodbury.
Of the village of Woodbury.
According to my best ability.
According to my best ability.
So Kathleen, do you want to speak now or do you want to wait for board comments? Speech or wait for later?
No, I'm gonna save the best for last.
Okay, there you go. Okay, continue public hearing. Introductory Local Law 4 of 2025, Amending the Village Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law 4 of 2025, the purpose of ensuring full opportunity for citizen participation in the preparation of the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on April 10, 2025, and the maps have been provided to the board for review. Okay, let me start with anybody in the public wishing to speak on the open space plan. Going once, going twice. Tara, you wanna... I'll head to the podium, just in case there are any questions. I'm asking Tara to come to the podium because it was the Land Preservation Committee that Tara was part of that helped bring this to fruition. If you want to move that podium, because I kind of moved it out of the way.
If it is movable, I would do so.
Yeah, it's not a movable feast there. Okay, any questions from the board?
This is on? Hello, not so much questions, but comments. I know we're carrying this over again, correct? The, okay, yeah, just words of support. I know you guys put a lot of work into this with the Land Preservation Committee, and I'd like to thank the members of that committee for all the work they put in. And, you know, I guess if this comes forward, say, after I'm off the board in January going forward, I hope you guys, you act on it and you pass it and push it through. It's a good document, needs a bit more improvement, and I'm sure there's probably possible improvements that could be made in the future depending on state legislation changes and things like that, and references to the state open space plans and county open space plans as well. Thank you all for your work.
Any other comments?
Just a quick note. We are still working with the documents that are marked up and outdated.
July, yeah.
Yeah. The, and I, we've invested quite a bit of money to add some open space on Smith-Clove Road, which of course is not reflected in either the maps or the text. In addition to that, the use of that land is a subject that should be addressed in this document as well. And while I know you want to adopt it as quickly as possible, I think it needs to be completed. The maps that we have also don't have the information about the additional parcel or what's going to happen to it.
Well, I think we're in agreement with that. I think it still needs to be tweaked a bit further. Dot our i's and cross our t's.
For that specific issue, sure. But Lena, I have a question for the attorney. So if you were to adopt as-is, what's the process for the amendment? The whole thing? So, yeah, then it makes sense not to go for it. It's not just passing an amendment, voting on it, and moving on. It's a good deal of work.
Yep.
So I do agree.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Lena, what do you think, January? Let me see. I will. Okay, so you want to push it off till then? You good? Okay.
Will the changes be done by then, though? No pressure, but kind of going on a little bit.
All right. Your call.
Yes.
He doesn't see, why not?
Okay, okay. I need your phone number. Because I, okay, oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so adjourn this till the January 8th meeting? All right, can I motion in a second to adjourn this to our January 8th meeting?
So moved.
Susan Suriello, second by trustee Fryban, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next public hearing, 48 Hadley Farm Building Moratorium Hardship Waiver Tie-In Consolidated Order. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments for 48 Hadley Farm Road for requested relief from Local Law 7 of 2025 and a requested tie-in to the Consolidated Water District. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on November 6. Is the applicant present? She is. Introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do.
Sure. Hello, I'm Melissa Jackson. I'm a resident of 48 Hadley Farms along with Nikhil Malnachak, my fiancee. Unfortunately, our home is 1910. We've had a well and it ran dry. Can you hear me? And are, testing, hello?
There you go.
And the well ran dry. We exhausted many possibilities with plumbers, water specialists. We had 300 feet of rope drop down to the bottom of the well. Nothing, dry. They said even if we were to keep digging, the amount of shale that's up there and with all of the different construction and where we're located in the mountain, the likelihood that our well to run dry again is very, very high in the next few years. We really, really want another well. But it's, when I tell you impossible, impossible. We spoke with another gentleman who was on an oil rig field for many years, a lot of digging, and he was like, sure, I'll take your $30,000 and keep drilling down, but unfortunately, you're not going to get water with the water tables in your area up on 48 Hadley Farm. They said, okay. So I do obviously respect that our town has been underneath a water moratorium for, you know, a few years for good reasons. Nikhil and I, it's just he and I at our home, we do travel quite significantly, so we're not home a lot, we don't have a lot of water usage, so we are just asking to be granted permission to tie into the town water at the public's graces and your graces. Thank you.
All right, Jason, you got anything on this? Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just how far is the service from their present water?
It's less than 100 feet.
So there's no effect on the, it's a regular saddle connection to the main?
Anyone else on the board? No? Okay, anyone in the public wishing to speak on this? Going once, going twice? Twice? All right, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second now to grant relief to 48 Hadley Farm Road from Local Law 7 of 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
And I want to add that her mom is here tonight from Detroit. Did not bring a single coney dog or any pizza.
Decision has been changed. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we don't get a lot of people from Detroit here. Okay, public comment on agenda items only. The agenda is available on the small table in the back. Anyone wishing to speak on the agenda, speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, moving on to administrative business, acceptance of minutes. Can I have a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on October 23, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, village clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract 11?
Abstract 11 contains vouchers 25260981 through 25261196 and totals $1,883,825.53.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 11 is read?
So moved.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. Just making sure, making sure. All right, he's, oh, he's got, he's already been through two. Okay, building permit fee request returned for 5 Loci Lane. Can I have a motion in a second to refund a building permit application for 5 Loci Lane in the amount of $10,575 to HDR Holding LLC?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With CJ Graziano's election to the village board, it creates an opening on our planning board. So can I have a motion in a second to accept the resignation of Christopher Graziano from the village planning board member, as a village planning board member effective November 6, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I would like to announce that I am appointing Maria Hunter to serve as the newest member of the planning board. So there's no old business. All right, we have a moratorium request for 345 Ridge Road Building Moratorium. A request was received on October 21, 2025, addressed to the village board requesting relief from Local Law 7 of 2025 Building Moratorium for 345 Ridge Road in Highland Mills. So can I have a motion in a second to schedule the public hearing for December 11, 2025?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our second meeting, December falls on Christmas Day. As much as I would like to be here with each and every one of you, that magic is just not going to happen. So can I have a motion in a second to cancel the second village board meeting in December?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Fabro, all in favor?
Aye.
In record time, what did I got here? And I'm giving you all ready. Getting through the meeting in 15 minutes. Okay, that's it. Now it's time for public comments on anything, anything, starting with the back row, guy standing against the wall. Anything? No, no, no. Next row. Actually, at this point, whoever wants to go up and speak, just go up and speak. No? Wow. Oh, Lisa, there we go. Maria Hunt is not here and everybody clamms up.
Quiet, it's quiet.
I was like, where is Maria?
She's at a John Fogerty concert.
Oh, cool.
Maria, good for her.
Lisa Hens, Highland Mills. I am here for a couple reasons, a couple hats. We'll start with Climate Smart. I wanted to thank Sue for our meeting the other day with the folks from the Woodbury Commons. Just so everybody knows, not too long ago, I was approached by Dave.
Mistrata.
Mistrata from Woodbury Commons in regards to the food scrap collections that we were doing. He wanted to see if some of the businesses at Woodbury Commons could join our food scraps. Well, if anybody stopped by our food scraps, it's two of us sitting there with a little bucket. So we could not be handling what the Woodbury Commons would be bringing to our food scraps collection. But we thought it was a good opportunity. We met a woman by the name of Renee, oh my gosh, can't think of her last name, from CET. It's a nonprofit that's run through the DEC. They come to municipalities and they basically investigate your recycling programs, everything from, she was willing to take the sweeper role. She's got a place for all sorts of things. And so she came down to have a conversation with us, with Woodbury Commons. We've come to find out that we might have to table the food scraps, no pun intended, for a little while, but we were able to realize that they're not recycling their plastic. So we're going to offer them the Trex recycling program, which at the Woodbury Commons level will be huge, huge. Also their fabric, there's some fabric that may be ruined in the process of transportation or whatever, so we can also work with them in getting that out of landfills as well as their e-waste. So some of their billboard signs or even at the store level, they may have computers and whatnot handhelds that aren't working. So just those three items alone is a big coup.
I think the key was that the meeting, the collaboration of the meeting, as we spoke, there were more and more things that we were just like pulling out. Like I said, what about your, like, what about electronics and having Electronics Day like Rob does, right?
Right.
Where maybe quarterly, so that we're not throwing those in the garbage. Their plastics, we talked about their fabrics, and it just, one thing led to the other, and I would say, they do do a lot environmentally.
They're amazing.
They're amazing.
Yeah.
But they know they can do more and they want to do more.
Yes.
Because it's costing them money to haul all this stuff away, and if they can take their, their plastic, like that plastic wrap that goes around all these pallets that every store has, it, the bulk that that takes in their compact or their trash bins is enormous. So they're saying, if they can actually generate revenue off of that, which they can from Trex and get that hauled away, that would be a huge, that would be a savings for them and a revenue generating for them. So it definitely was a win-win. They were very interested, and Renee from CET was fabulous, like the amount of resources that she could provide them with.
Yeah.
So that, and the food scrap, we'll work on it. Is a bigger, is a bigger animal because of the type of customer that's there. You don't, it's, when you look at like a college campus, right, you have the same kids that you just need to retrain.
Right.
But when you're at the Woodbury Commons, right, somebody's different mostly every day besides your employees, but all your shoppers are pretty much different every day. So there's a different approach that's going to need to be taken, and that's just going to take a little time to implement, I think.
Correct, correct. But again, like you said, though, if anybody shops at Woodbury Commons, I don't know if you do or not, but they are very sustainability aware, like they've got LED lights everywhere. They have totally switched over. They've got solar where it can apply. They're already doing cardboard. They're, they're going to get.
They have the bins for the shoe boxes, that's a big thing. When people go to shop there, they bring suitcases. Well, they don't want to put the actual, they buy shoes, they don't want to put the box in the suitcase because it takes a lot of room, so they ditch the box.
Ditch the box.
And they put the shoes in the suitcase is what typically happens.
Right.
So they've installed these boxes that you can, like a metal box that you can put the shoe boxes inside. They did admit that, I think they underestimated the volume and they're going to need to get bigger ones.
Right, right.
But again, they're just, they're very aware and they're actually, as a, Simon as a group, they kind of challenge each other to try to come up with new sustainability ideas.
Ideas, right.
I think they'll be looking good at their next, uh, how.
I agree, I agree. And what that trickles down to us as a Climate Smart community is that collaboration, which then goes back to our DEC points. As most of you know, we're at bronze status and we're a hair away from silver, which is amazing, amazing in this amount of time. And we can probably do it by next year. So again, this is a good collaboration, and so that was a successful meeting. We also, Desiree's not here, she could confirm, we've received another grant. This is a food scraps grant. It's a small one, it's about $7,444.19.
Wow.
19 cents to spend, folks. So it all, we're hoping to set up some composting bins at the farm once we can get in there, and then that'll take our food scraps collection from the library directly to the farm, and we can go bigger and better with what we compost. So still not Woodbury Commons level, but we can go bigger and better within our community. Jackie and I are waiting to hear on a grant, which is a bigger grant, so we'll keep that hushed till we find out more, but we are in works with another grant, so for composting within the home level. So hopefully, fingers crossed. Also, wanted to thank the mayor. We received the award. We went the other day to the Hudson Valley Regional Council. They honored Woodbury and probably about five or six other communities for what's called bridging the, bridging the, I think it was bridging the gap or something like that, for our coolest recycling. Within Orange County, there's three of us. Chester did it, Warwick did it, and we did it. And that's where we collect, thanks Rob for letting us collect our coolest, our items with coolant in them. So this year we collected 44. Last year we were a little better at 84, so any, any little bit helps. Also to let everybody know, this Saturday is our pumpkin smash. We've got the Highland Mills Fire Department coming out. They come and they run them over. Gray Barn donated 100 pumpkins, so if you don't have your pumpkin anymore, come on out, we got one for you. We've got different devices to throw them at, smash them at, whatever. All of that, all that pumpkin guts goes back to Jones Farms, we're still helping them, so they'll feed the, whatever. Everybody gets to eat pumpkins and they're happy about that. But Sweet Clover, it's at Sweet Clover Farm from 10 to 1. Sweet Clover will be open at 12. Please come down and support him. He has done an amazing job on that property, and if we can get out and support him, you know, it just makes it worth the effort. God knows when you put the effort in and nobody shows up, it's disheartening. So if we could all get out, we're going to have our Lego Kids there, hopefully Scout 24s flying high. We're hoping to get them. And then it leads me to another grant that I earned, which isn't through Climate Smart. It was kind of on my own, and it's called Partners in Climate Action, and it is a listening grant, and it couldn't have come at a better time for Woodbury. It is, they've given me money to go out into the community and listen to your environmental wants. So I've got, there's some cards over there, I've got a questionnaire. If you scan the QR code, tell me what Woodbury used to be to you or what it is to you now. What do you get out and do in your free time in Woodbury? What might be missing? What do you remember that maybe we can bring back? Just flood the, flood the survey with any kind of information. I'm going to compile it and then come back to the community and have them rank those, those by importance to you guys. So the more information I can get, the more we can work on stuff, which is part of the training of the grant, is that they're teaching me how to get more money to, to make these wishes come true. So now's your opportunity. And then lastly, we are doing our toy swap, December 6, right here, 10 to 2, but don't quote me on that, I have a flyer. And so that's just to keep toys out of landfills and kids get to go home with something new. You can bring the kids, they can bring a toy, swap it out for a new toy, and we're, it's up to five toys. So I don't think I forgot anything. Oh, Reeds Across America, hello. Yes, I did. The 13th, we have met our goal, so we are laying. Thank you, everybody. We had some huge contributions, right, that I was sweating a little bit. We are up to 832 wreaths that we lay. We sadly lost a couple of our, our veterans this year, and so sadly our number goes up. And so we are 832. It's a family-friendly event, if you haven't been. It's at Cemetery of the Highlands, it starts promptly at noon. Deacon Paul is our emcee, and we try and involve every kid out there. We've got the Boy Scouts, we got the Girl Scouts, we got the choir, we got Lily Gerbers. We try and involve all the kids because, you know, as you know, if you don't start young with them and the appreciation of our veterans or just our community, there's no other place. So the, the goal of Reeds Across America is every time you, when you lay the wreath, you say that veteran's name, and therefore they're never forgotten. So that is their, their motto, their goal, so. I think that's it. Congratulations to our new board, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else in public wishing to speak?
Jimmy, Highland Mills, slight change to my notes. Kathleen, welcome to the board. Again, I hear nothing but great things about you. And what was it, was it the first or second time we met and spoke, you offered me help? That's the amazing thing. Instead of telling me to leave you alone, you offered something to help me with my kids, and I appreciate that. In case anyone missed it, election, election day was last week, and I'm going to lose two of my friends on this side, Taryn and CJ. They lost two years ago, but instead of hiding out and sulking, they were more invested in this community than, than ever before. And that just gives, you know, that inspires me to stay involved with what we do here. I'm glad you guys approved that hardship waiver for Melissa and Nick. And that's, that kind of leads into something else. I've been following them for a while, you know, they've been doing ordeals not of their own doing. Steve, Steve Gargano here has been through a hardship not of his doing, and that was one thing this election that I was adamantly against, streamlining the planning board, making things easier, because it's the residents here that are affected by it. You never know what's going to happen. So any shortcuts, I don't care whether it's extending a deck by, you know, two inches, you can't predict what's going to happen. You know, sooner or later, we're going to have to, I'll be honest, I was going to come out here and, and just, you know what? You know, gloat, but no. I'm here to thank, and I'm not even addressing the board, I'm going to address the residents out here and the residents that may watch the video on replay later. The results of this election are because of the residents. Look at this room. Look at, you go watch the town board meeting, that room was packed. People are engaged, they care, and they came out to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else in public wishing to speak? Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Jackie Hernandez, Highland Mills. Congratulations, Kathleen, on your appointment. I just wanted to bring attention to the upper room. We'll be having a Friendsgiving celebration on Sunday, November 23rd at 2:30 PM. If you have a teenager that wants to socialize, we will be at the community center in the town of Woodbury. Also, I know that tomorrow's the last day for in-person donations, for food donations for the holidays, for the pantry, the local pantry. It's tomorrow, it's today? Yep. So, but we will be, we, the people of Woodbury, will be doing a holiday food drive-by. So, on November 16th, from 2 to 5 PM, if you have food in your home that you'd like to donate, we will continue collecting food to donate for the pantry as well as the local giving boxes, the food boxes that are throughout the community. So, if you have any items, we're going to be posting that on, on social media. If you have any items that you'd like to donate, you can go to, you can message us at wethepeopleofwoodbury.com. And we will be doing drive-bys, so you don't have to leave your home with the food. You can just leave a bag out for we, the people of Woodbury and they'll come around to collect the food to donate to local pantries. Thank you.
Oh, boy.
Ed, Sue's, Highland Mills. I'm the current scoutmaster for TRU4. Starting this weekend, we are also doing the food pantry pickup. We're dropping off bags around Woodbury. We have a shopping list on it. We hope you fill it out and we pick it up next Saturday and drop them off at the food pantry. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else in the public? Once? Twice? Okay.
This is awful. Thank you. Tara Bjork, Central Valley. So, I just want to congratulate you, Mrs. Matola. I can't call you Kathleen, I'm really sorry. As the parent of a former, one of your students and a current student, I just want to say how important it is to have a role model, a positive role model for your kids in that classroom. When I was a kid, I never, I had some teachers that impacted me, but I know just from my older daughter, who's 14, who had you during COVID and how challenging of a time it was for children, you made it seamless. To Lily, my girl, who you currently have now and she's a handful, you too make that seamless. And for them to see you up here, sitting there, making an impact in the community the way you do in a classroom for them, I cannot thank you enough for putting yourself out there, knowing what you see people go through when they run for office or when they sit on a board. You're never going to get everybody's approval. But I know, having dealt with you for a good number of years, you're going to be one of the most fair people and you're going to represent the people fairly, honestly, and with integrity. So, thank you for stepping up. This is a very proud day for me and for my kids who are watching you and your own son, who's sitting right there and I'm sure beaming, I'm beaming for you. So, thank you so much and well done, mayor, on your appointment of Mrs. Matola. Thank you.
Okay. Department comments, starting with Jason. Anything? Nada? Rob? Good, all right. You know? All right. Nothing? Okay. Board comments, starting at the far end with trustee Jim Fryben.
Thank you. We're sort of reaching the completion of our council memberships. And I wanted to say, first, the community support that I've received over the past two months that we've been talking to so many residents is so appreciated. And I thank Eric, everybody that I talk to. You learn so much and really get inspired to really do more for the village. I also wanted to, you know, thank the department heads because during the course of our two years, they've been so helpful in getting us information and basically figuring out how to make things work better. Thank you. Obviously, well, not so obviously. At this point, I really want to wish our successor council members the most support and best wishes for doing what's, what serves the village so well. There's so many things the village needs and leadership has to be on all the boards and really the communication with the community is essential. And that's what I wish, all the new members, that you listen to the community and try and get the job done right. I really, again, thank all the residents who have supported us for the past two years. And congratulations, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Trustee Fabro.
I'd like to echo those comments. Congratulations, Kathleen. I'm somewhat disappointed we only get two meetings together, but I'm sure you're going to do great with the new board. And congrats once again to all the newly elected, both on the village board and the town side. I'm glad that we have a contentious election finally behind us all. And no matter the outcome, I know you're all going to work hard and you're going to do right by your constituents in the community. And you're going to keep working the issues we've been working on with this current board. You know, we have the annexation, we have water, sewer, all those things. I wrote a much longer post on Facebook, some of you may have seen. And we're, you guys, I'm sure are going to keep doing a good job on those items. And to the public, keep coming out, stay engaged. It's what gives life to the politics of this town and this community and it's, it's very important. So, thank you all and have a happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you.
Trustee Matola.
It is much easier to talk to 25 4th graders. It is my true honor to accept being appointed tonight to the trustee of the Village of Woodbury Board. My deep connection to Woodbury gives me a thorough understanding of its unique character, rich history, and the specific, specific challenges and opportunities that we face today. As a trustee, I pledge to listen actively to the concerns and ideas of every resident, business owner, and community group. I want to work collaboratively with my fellow board members and town staff to develop sensible and sustainable solutions. And most importantly, to act with integrity. It's the only thing nobody can take away from you. Make informed decisions that prioritize the long-term well-being and fiscal health of our town. So, thank you for trusting me.
Who brought those rowdy kids here?
Free homework passes.
Thank you, trustee Matola.
You hear that, Lily? Get a rain check, Lily. Rain check. I just wanted to say, congratulations, Kathleen, and congratulations to CJ and Tara. I look forward to working with all of you. I'd also just like to say, when I saw the election results, it made me very proud of our community that so many people came out to vote and so many people are now engaged. And that makes me, that's something that's so important. And this core group that I see all the time here, thank you, thank you, thank you, because you are the reason why this community became so engaged. You know who you are. There are a lot of you out there and I'm proud of each and every one of you. I want everybody to have a wonderful Thanksgiving because we won't be here. Love your families, love your kids, and eat a lot of food. Thank you.
So, even a broken clock is right twice a day. And it was Kathleen Matola who approached me at our fundraiser and said, "The worst kept seeking in the world is that Vic Forelli is going to be leaving." Okay? It was, it was, I should have just put it on a billboard or had one of those skywriters go by with it. Everybody knew and everybody was making their pitch to be village trustee. And I was like, "What the heck would you want to do that for?" Right? But she wanted to do it and I was like, "Wow, that's, that would be good and that'll work." So, I know she's going to do great things with this board. I think she is a welcome addition to the Village of Woodbury. And I want to thank her for accepting my invitation to be a village trustee. I think she adds so much to this board. It's, I think it's just going to be a great two years with her. Going on to election night. So, good news is, is that on election night, I was up by eight. And I was not really concerned because for me, it was more important that the other seats had changed. And that we had new and dynamic leadership on the town side and I had my old board returning. So, I wasn't so much worried about me. It was, like I said, more important that the village and town were in good hands. And they are. Today, I increased my lead to 16. And I know, I know a lot of people were approaching me after election night and going, "Oh, congratulations, congratulations." And I was like, "Nope, I haven't won anything yet." Because I need to get to a point where all the absentees are in and everything else like that. Well, we're at that point. And you now are stuck with me for the next two years. I want to say this, how proud I am of this community. Because for me, I had an uphill battle. I was running on a third-party line and I had full election districts that had no intentions of voting for me whatsoever. And our entire team, our entire slate, got past all that. And here we are. It was a tough election. I'll be the first to say that, considering how much money was spent against me and how my name was dragged through the mud. But as Elton John said, "I'm still standing." And I am, I am here and our team, that Row F team, is here because of the community coming out and being engaged and being involved. And that's, like CJ Graziano talked about this when we had six people in a room at a meeting. And we don't have that anymore. We have a lot more people involved, a lot more people asking questions, and that's fine. Because that's what we want. We have nothing to hide on this side of the table. We want the engagement of our community. And I think if nothing else, election night, prove that, that the community can come out, band together and say, "We have a good group of people here that we want in, we want changes." And they did it. They did it for us. So, for me, I want to thank each and every person that voted for the Row F team, which honestly stands for family. Because that's how I feel about each and every one of those people that I am now not only ran with and ran successfully with, but I have the absolute pleasure and opportunity to work with them over the next two-plus years. So, I just, like I said, just want to thank everybody for all you did. Jimmy Ng, Highland Mills, everything you did on there, but thank you. And thank you, everybody who supported me and more importantly, those I ran with. And that's all I got. You got any final words? No?
It's all mayor.
All mayor. Okay. With no further business to discuss or comments received, can I have motion of second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion. Second.
Second by trustee Matola with a first motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Remember, if you work in an office with Chuck Norris, never ask him for a three-hole punch. I am giving you gold here, people. Gold.